I call the meeting to order. It is eleven oh one and it is November seventeenth. First order of business is approval of the minutes from October twentieth. Do I have any corrections?
I do. There was a mistake at the end that's been brought to my attention. Trustee Eckberg was not in the list of people who approved.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So he, his name needs to be added.
Subtracted.
Subtracted. Help me out, David.
This is on the first page, the second paragraph.
Sorry.
I was omitted for some reason between Yaz Downey and Tinty.
Okay, so that needs to be added.
Okay, and other corrections? No. Okay, do I have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Landry, I.
Tinty, I.
Davis.
Yaz Downey, I.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's unanimous. And thank you to Mariana for the minutes. All right, Director's Report, what do you have for us, Ryan?
What don't I have for you?
I shouldn't phrase it like that, but okay.
Yeah, so just kind of in advance of the, oh, I want to note for the minutes that Timothy Lit joined us in the attendees. So just when Mariana's doing the minutes, we have that listed. Okay, sorry to interrupt. Director's Report, yeah. So just, I know I'm already jumping ahead to expenses, but part of, if you guys did look at the expense report, one thing you may note is that we're a little behind in spending on the book budget, in my opinion, for this time of year. The reason has been because of the delivery delays from Ingram. So we talked a lot with our vendor. I went to the Mila Conference and I kind of made sure that him and Leah were in touch. So there's a section in the budget area that talks about the Ingram Express that we're now joining. So we get a forty-four percent discount on new books on a regular account. On this new Express, we're getting a forty percent discount, which is, to me, a nominal difference. We are ordering books on a Monday and we got them by Thursday. That hasn't been what's happening. We're lucky if we order the books and then get them within a month. Yeah, that's how long it's been taking on average. So this is a step in the right direction. Leah is very happy with the turnaround time. It is limited to new books. And then I think it's like popular titles, so it's mostly fiction, but that is really what we've been trying to get up quickly. So I just wanted to kind of note that that's been a little bit of a vendor change. We're a little worried because we're using Baker &amp; Taylor to kind of offset these delays with Ingram. And now Baker &amp; Taylor, this is their final week before they completely go out of business, so.
So Ingram's the only game in town now?
Yeah, we've been, so Baker &amp; Taylor's been doing this thing they call the Last Chapter Sale, where we can go back. I know, right? I love that. I had to say it, Janet, because I love it so much. But they are doing a fifty percent discount on their in-stock inventory. So I've been using that as kind of a way to refresh our graphic novels. But also, to be blunt, it's a way to spend some money. I hadn't really done any purchasing for graphic in a while. I hadn't had time. So I use this as kind of an opportunity, if that makes sense. And then I have assured the staff who've had to process a lot of graphic novels in a short amount of time that this is kind of my big contribution for the year, as far as those, so. Any questions about the vendor services or Ingram?
You're still on the expense report.
Yeah, we're, we're, I'm sorry, I'm on the budget piece of the Director's Report. I was kind of jumping.
We're leaving the expense, we'll come back to the expense.
We're gonna come back to the expense report, I promise. Yeah, I can already tell I got questions. Okay, so Facilities, DPW and IT, a lot of those are self-explanatory. The, some of the stuff that I have assured you in the report that is ready to go is not ready to go. I think the EV charging station is still not operational as of this morning. And then Hassan is still working on the third public computer, so.
Working on us and repairing or getting us a new?
So, so in between the last meetings, we, because we've been talking in the meetings about how Hassan was going to replace the public computers. The power supply in the third public computer just died. So there was no way to kind of repair that issue. Or I, I think there's a way to repair everything, but it was cheaper to just replace the computer than to try to repair the power supply. So he used it as we're gonna replace the third computer first, because that, right now, we don't, we don't have a third computer, so that he's been, he's been here pretty regularly trying to kind of reverse engineer how the computers were configured years ago. And then he's coordinated a lot with CW Mars on how to install it. So I've been helping to make that connection. And then largely, he doesn't need me, to tell you the truth. He just has to ask the questions from CW Mars. And he's also had to talk to the Phronics Company, which manages the deep freeze software, which wipes the patron data after every use. So that, I think the Phronics thing has taken up more time, because they're not super responsive, like CW Mars is, so.
Thank you, Hassan, right?
Yeah. There's a financial component with the, sorry, David, do you want to go ahead?
Are we still on the Director's Report?
We're still on the Director's Report. I promise I will let you know when we go to expense. I'm gonna try to go quick. Yep.
The, the fourth bullet point down on, under Facilities, I guess it doesn't make any difference to, we, to our ever-loving, ever-smiling taxpayers, but charging the library for materials, I know that it comes out of one budget or it comes out of another town budget, but is that cricket or is that petty? On their part?
I can't answer that, because I'm not the one who's doing it. I did talk with accounting and with the Facilities Department. This is not uncommon. And I believe in the past, Marguerite and maybe even Jane might remember some of this. We used to do DPW projects and then we would kind of talk about how we didn't have a line item. If they would say that there was a charge or they wanted to do an interdepartmental thing. So I would kind of beg Karen if DPW would just pay for it, because it usually wasn't substantial money. I don't view this as substantial money either.
To have the path removed too. I mean, what's the diff, right?
We did want the path removed. I, I did not, I think when Jane and I spoke to DPW, there was no discussion about how there was going to be an additional cost for that. But it's fine. I mean, it costs money, so I understand where they're coming from. We could, if this isn't, we don't have the ability to cover this amount out of our budget, which I think we might for this particular amount. Then I would come back to you guys and just let you know we will pay for it out of state aid. That's okay with you.
Path out of state aid too. We paid to have the path removed out of state aid.
Okay.
Can we just, I, I'm with David. Why, why are we paying for that and not DPW?
Well, the thought was that it should have been folded into the requests or the, the scope of work for asphalt engineering. And it wasn't because apparently the library thought DPW was gonna cover it and DPW thought the library was gonna cover it. So it ends up, it's our path, so we're gonna pay for the loan and the seeding.
I have another question on the, the next, the first bullet point under Programs.
Could we stick, David, one second? There's a huge pile of branches over near the, I mean, while we're talking about the grounds. You know where the tree, the cherry tree that lost all those big branches? Well, now there's a big pile of smaller branches. Is that something J&amp;J could take care of? I mean, I don't know who put them there, but certainly the gardeners did not.
My guess is that J&amp;J might have put them there, ha, ha, ha.
I would, I would agree. And then there's additional branches that are down throughout the property. So I, I don't know if they were collecting them, but because of the amount of wind that's been occurring, I am happy to send in a request to DPW, Jane.
Yeah. Have DPW do it or to have J&amp;J do it?
Well, we have to send in the request to DPW and then DPW's like engages with J&amp;J, because they manage the contract.
They manage the landscapers. Okay, that would be great, because I, I mean, yes, it's been super windy. But someone went to the effort of piling them up and then walked away, so come on.
Just while we're on the grounds as well, there were several complaints from patrons and even some of the staff members on leaves that had been piled in front of the door. So the gardeners were here closing out the planters and they had brought a leaf blower and they were kind enough to let me borrow that so that we could get the leaves out of the door. There were also a substantial amount of leaves were in front of the book drop. So I did talk to DPW. I, I think maybe there was some confusion.
Who did you talk to at DPW, Ryan?
I talked to, I sent in the request to Tammy and then I talked with Chris Leroy.
Okay.
So he said that it's possible that the wind blew them there, but they were in pretty manicured piles. So I don't think that was the case, but he assured me that J&amp;J did not do that on purpose, maybe. So it's fine, there's not substantial leaves in front of the doorway now. It was very kind of the gardeners to lend us the leaf blower to do that. So please pass along my thanks, Jane.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm, I'm thinking the following thing. It's gonna continue to be windy and branches are gonna continue to blow down all winter. And leaves will be around too. We do not hire J&amp;J, the DPW does. So maybe it's worth kind of a polite note to the DPW saying the heavy pickup or the pickled branches and leaf piles J&amp;J ought to be doing, or if they aren't, somebody could be doing. And just make it known that this is what we would like going forward. Thank you very much.
Why don't, why don't you and I, Marguerite, work on a nice message to DPW together?
We can, we'll send flowers. So the other part of it is we can't keep going on about, about landscaping issues that aren't working out. I think it would be good if we had clearer lines of what we expect, because we're spending like fifteen minutes talking about landscaping that wasn't done to our, and it's gonna continue this way all winter. Do you know what I mean, Jane? So it'd be nice to sort of.
Yes, no, I can help Ryan with the email. I mean, we, maybe we need another, another, another list for them to just say this is what our expectations are. And is it DPW? Ryan, I'll meet, I'll help you with that. I'll come in and we can write that.
Okay, that's fine. And, and it's.
I mean, if you want to, Marguerite, but I've done this before and it seems most effective to send a bulleted list and say, whose job is this and how soon will it get done?
Well, also, and pass it along to J&amp;J that this is part of their scope of work, as they say. Because they may think we don't have a trailer to take away branches. We're only a lawnmower.
Come on.
I think they're kind of like tired of mowing the lawn, actually. Anyway, also, so in the winter.
That's not our problem.
Exactly. So need to make it clear what we would like.
No, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I think we need, I was thinking we did need another little meeting, but an email would work just as well.
I think just to sort of politely say this, this would be, you know, it's the middle of town, it would look good. It's a J&amp;J job. Let them know, okay?
Okay, Ryan, I'll come in and do that with you. Are you okay with that?
Yes, I just, I know that there has been, I don't want to compound this, Marguerite, because it seemed like you wanted to move on, but I, I do think maybe, I think, Marguerite, you and I need to meet, Jane, as a group, to discuss how we're gonna disseminate the communication so that we're all clear on how, what is being sent, how it's being worded. Is that okay? Marguerite is happy with it as well?
Well, just, Jane, you and Ryan can do it and just, I mean, CC me on it before you send it and I'll just say lovely, lovely and put my.
Okay, so let, yeah, let's develop it in draft form before we send it to DPW. Because we don't, obviously, we're not trying to ruffle any feathers here. And this is gonna be a list of things that we just need to see worked on, if that makes sense.
We've done it in the past and I don't think it ruffled feathers.
I think the last one might have. So I think, I don't know, it does seem like there's a. I, I want to be, I want to be mindful of the sensitivity issues, I guess, over there, so.
But Jane is spot on. That, that northwest corner of the property has been a subject of neglect long before the wind started blowing.
Neglect for the last fifty years is what.
The branch pile that Jane is talking about, I'm aware of, and is something that needs to be addressed. You're one hundred percent correct. So I don't, I, I guess, we'll just make sure that we're all good on the wording. I, I know that seems silly, but we don't, obviously, we're not setting out to offend anyone, if that makes sense. And I, I do worry about people's offense level, I guess, at this point.
I think we all know who you're talking about, yes.
David, I've seen your lawn. There's not, there's not a single leaf on it. Don't you have a Saturday afternoon that you'd like to come to the library and do a little picking?
Yeah, I've got nothing else to do. I'm just sitting around here watching the Golf Channel, you know?
Daisy earns a nickel for every stick she picks up at our house, so definitely send her over.
That's a good way to do it.
Okay, sorry. All right, let's go, let's move away from that.
Well, I mean, I, we, the next topic is the, is the hot one, because we're talking about the eagle, so.
That's a great place for the eagle.
Oh, my God.
I think it's a great place for the eagle. I don't, I can't think of a better place in town for that.
Why does it have a place in town?
Art artifact that was carved years and years ago by a town resident?
It's, but it's not of any historical significance. It's not lovely.
It is a thing of beauty. I mean, it's a hand-carved, hand-carved piece all out of one piece of wood. I mean, there's a lot of creativity that's going in it. I happen to like it. I happen to like it where it is. That's all I'm gonna say.
So to, to provide background, because we, Sam Stivers has also joined us in the attendees as well.
Welcome, Sam.
Record. Hi, Sam. We, the Facilities Department was cleaning out the old Historical Society location, the old Flag School building. This hand-carved wooden eagle that is at least, as far as we can determine, around forty years old, maybe a little bit longer.
Nineteen eighty-two.
Yes, was left there. The Historical Society does not want the eagle anymore. The Facilities Department was looking for a location where the eagle could be displayed. So I think they looked at a number of areas in the townhouse. And there isn't like a great place where it could be on public display, which there's an article that was with the eagle from The Villager. I guess the artist had the intention to have it be publicly displayed where people could view it. So John reached out to me. He sent me some pictures of it. He asked me if the library would want it. And I, I did say yes, because it is art. I can see that the head nods, no. I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not done. So, so I'll say this, I'm gonna say this in advance. Art causes a reaction. It isn't always a positive reaction. And I would say that this is public art, because people feel very strongly one way or the other. But Facilities came within, I, I actually had to leave to go to lunch. And when, I guess they brought the eagle over and installed it. And the area that it was installed was my suggestion, because the sculpture's quite large and needed a significant area, surface area to be placed. So I, I think John was also thinking of the front room, because the, you know, obviously, it's brown and there's a lot of wooden infrastructure in there. What I will say is I was not expecting the staff to have a very visceral reaction to its inclusion here and its placement. It does sort of look like the bird is gonna swoop down towards the circulation desk. It does have that general feeling, I guess, that some people are saying. I don't mind it. I, I'm more Switzerland on this one. I have talked to, I, I see you, Mary. I, I promise. I'm okay with it staying. I'm okay with it being removed. I have confirmed with the Facilities Department that it can be removed. And at this point, we have found another home for it at the townhouse in Mark's office, if we so choose to do that. Normally, when we receive something like this, I probably wouldn't put it to all of you guys and ask you what you think. But I think at this point, this is where we're at. The, the staff have asked us to engage with all of you about your opinions on this and what you'd like to do.
Shall we put it through a vote?
Well, can I?
Yeah, Mary had a hand up.
Only, only because of my background, I feel it's important that I weigh in and just say, I have not seen this eagle yet. So as, as somebody who comes from the art historical and museum and curatorial realm, both that is, I'm happy to go look at it. I do not mean to hold things up, but I just felt it was important to issue that disclaimer so that it informs how, how we, if anyone was looking to me to offer an opinion, I, I do not, I have not seen it.
Can I send you a picture? I have it on my.
You can do whatever you want. I'm happy, but I'm also happy to go with the consensus of the group. I just, you know, in case anyone was gonna say, you know, well, Mary, what do you think? I, I do not have a thought.
I'm texting you a photo right now.
Just for my own clarification here, it's, it seems like there's no, oh, sorry, Jane, do you want to go ahead?
No, Mary, you were talking. Yeah, yeah, but okay, go on, Mary.
I was just gonna say, if I'm understanding correctly, there's no historical significance that the Historical Society that met, that met the benchmark of the Historical Society wanting to, to hold on to this object. There is also potentially, but yet there is a connection potentially between the artist and Southbrow. Is the Southbrow artist potentially? Okay, and then on top of that, Ryan, the library has a collection plan? Yes, no?
So we have a, we have a historical collection criteria. I, again, I think there's some debate on whether or not this item is.
Just because somebody would like their very generous donation to be accepted or displayed does not necessarily mean that the receiving institution has the room, the capability of cleaning it, or that it, that it fits with the collecting purposes of the institution, so.
Or the agreement of its attractiveness, or lack thereof.
So there you go, exactly. So I feel like, we don't, we don't, since you've found another home for it, it seems like that might be the best course of action.
Jane, what were you gonna say? Thank you, Mary. What were you gonna add in?
I was going to say I had not yet seen it, but now you've provided a picture. And I also have been, it has been mentioned to be by a couple of your employees that they really, that the eagle is a huge topic of conversation. And have I seen the eagle? And I had not, so I better get a, well, now you've shown it to me. So I'm, I'm getting that the employees really don't like it.
I mean, I have not taken a formal poll. I would say informally, we have a lot more no's than yeses.
But they, are they the more vocal people?
No.
Well, again, I think we can also, you know, I don't run the library by consensus, believe it or not. But I, I do think that this is one where people have felt very strongly. They feel like, again, I think if the eagle was in sort of a more relaxed pose, this might be a different, it's the fact that the wings are outstretched and its beak is further out. It's almost like it's in an aggressive stance.
It is in an aggressive stance.
It is, so that is a factor, I think.
Could you, could you put it somewhere else, not just over the door?
Like in John Perrin or in.
Ryan's office?
So I'm.
Well, it seems like he has another office for it, right?
Okay.
Have an office over at Town Hall for it.
Mark, Mark Purple said he would take it, or Town Administrator, so he's, yeah.
Okay.
But if you guys want to take a formal vote on this, on getting it removed, okay.
I think you should make the decision. In my opinion, you should make the decision, Ryan. I don't think this is worthy of a vote.
But I definitely support the staff feelings on this. They're sitting.
The, the intention of accepting this item was to find a home for it. It, the intention was not to upset people or make people feel uncomfortable. So if that is what this is doing, which I do think that that is correct, I think many people, many of the staff would back up me saying that statement, then it should go, it should be removed.
Can I, I have a little bit of a different feeling too. I think, Ryan, on, on all the exhibits that we do and all those kind of things, I think absolutely you choose. But if it's a, if it's a part of the permanent building, part of the permanent collection, I, I really do think it should come to us.
That's fine.
But not the staff, but not the staff.
No, we can take their opinion into account. They're looking at it more than anybody else, but, but in terms of, yeah, weighing its significance to the town or the library or our mission, I'm seeing kind of a big gap there.
I, I, I don't, I don't take any personal offense to that, Janet. I think something like this, I was gonna run by you anyway. I didn't realize that Facilities was gonna ask and then install it within twenty minutes. We've never had that type of turnaround with Facilities before. That kind of is leading me to think maybe that other things could happen that quick, so I'm having that conversation with John. John is not offended by having the guys come here and take it to another location. But this is, I, we didn't, I didn't get a consensus from the board when we accepted the Southbrow drug sign for Instant Janet. And that was something where, that's where the Historical Collection is in the back. Do you know what I'm talking about? It was the old.
Oh, the old, okay.
So sometimes what happens is I get asked these things, because people are either, they're like, literally, like, Charlie was literally leaving town that day. So it was like, I either say yes or no, and then we get it or we don't. But I, what I think is, if it's something that is gonna become a permanent fixture or take up a large section of space, I, I, I'm gonna make a report to the board and then I will make sure that things are not installed or are removable before you, like, so that you guys get a chance to weigh in first. Is that okay?
Yeah. I also think you probably get in an awkward position, a lot of this stuff, where people want you to take things or display things or whatever, and it's, you know, you don't want to hurt feelings, but it's not always appropriate. And we can be your fallback too.
We were also asked to, whether or not we wanted a donation of these large touchscreen monitors. And like, when we were looking at the area, regardless of installing them or where they were gonna go, we looked at maybe putting one of them in Eden and it was going to be most of one of the walls. That's how big this request was. So I will say, I just said no, because it would have affected our ability to run programs in the room. So it, it didn't make sense. And this is one of the rare instances where I guess they said yes and people got upset versus usually I say yes to, I think, things that make sense. Again, I was not anticipating this type of reaction or this, this type of polarization from everybody. So I, I do, and I'm, I'm even sensing it, you know, I know David thinks it's, it's kind of, I, I will say, from an artistic standpoint, it is very intricate and cool. One of the, Leah, I'll say Leah, I think she'd be happy to be mentioned here. Leah said, do you think this is a good fit for the library? And I have to pause and say, no, it doesn't really go with the rest of the decor here. But it is cool, I'll say that. I, it is interesting and a lot of time and energy and effort went into it, and I don't want to minimize that, if that makes sense.
Too bad the Southborough Open Land Foundation doesn't have an office in town. Or what, you know what I mean? Cause I feel like um, or like a local Audubon chapter.
We also thought about, would it make sense of public safety long term? Because, you know, that sort of is more fitting with kind of the aesthetic there. And they don't have a lot of public art there, so that's another thing, but I guess they have limited space.
Yeah, they have, they have, and Public Safety has all of their historical stuff right in the cabinets when you go in. They have a lot of stuff, but it's, it's behind glass. And it's not gonna interrupt anyone who's moving around there. I don't know, I just thought the issue about cleaning, and, and frankly, if Leah was upset, Mariana didn't like it. Because she felt it was like, you look up and there's this raptor coming at you with its talons out. Um, I think my, my objection is that the staff doesn't feel, literally doesn't feel comfortable with it looming over their heads like that.
I, I can't picture a town, anything that maybe Open Land would, that this thing fits with its mission. It's, it's somebody's personal effort and I'm sure it's, I'm sure it was difficult. And I'm sure it's technically interesting, but I don't see where it fits in a town thing.
But I, I promise, if something like this is requested of me in the future, I will bring it to the board so that you can discuss it. And again, I made sure that it could be removed prior to this conversation. If that is really the consensus that we're getting. If you wanna leave it to me, I think we're gonna proceed with removal. And then we had it on temporary exhibition at the library, which is great. Maybe at some point it could be temporary again, but I think a lot of our staff would have to be retired at that point, so.
Is it, is it, I'm understanding from this conversation that artist is no longer with us or no longer in Southborough?
Correct, and his spouse has passed away as well, and they had no children. We actually investigated that to, I say we, some of the concerned staff members investigated that. To see if there maybe was um, a family member that would want this, um, and there was not. So, we checked.
Well.
Any final thoughts on the eagle?
Off it goes.
We, we got hornswoggled into taking electric vehicle uh, charging stations on the property. And now we're throwing out a wonderful piece of art, doesn't smell good.
Well, I will say, we've had several requests from community members who want to use the EV charger already. Um, including phone calls, so um, we've had to tell people unfortunately it's not ready. But I don't, I don't, I know that may not change some opinions here, but it does look like the EV charger is gonna be utilized. The eagle is more, it is hard because of where it's placed. You can't even see some of the intricate design, because you can't even see like the back of it or anything because of. And we just don't have a physically large enough place to put it, where you can see the whole thing. So, but your point is well taken, David. I don't wanna.
Again, not to perpetuate this, take the eagle down. If you'd like to have a sidebar conversation, um, maybe there is a creative way that even the friends could get involved. To do some, to either find a home for this eagle, um, you know. Again, I haven't seen it, but is there a way to, like, to do one of those little raffles about, guess how many feathers? And the correct person gets to take the eagle home or something like that. If you wanted to do that, I'd be happy to try and brainstorm it, otherwise I say Mark Purple's office is lovely.
Could I ask a question?
Always, Jane.
If Facilities wanted to um, rid themselves of this piece of artwork. Do they want to rid themselves of our bench or outside? Where, where is that bench?
The teak bench?
The teak bench?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's still with Facilities, Frank um, had not had time to complete it. So we're looking at, um, now that it's the winter, we're hoping that we can try to make that happen for next spring.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, that was not a twenty minute turnaround, Jane. That was, that's been years now, that the teak bench has been there, you know.
I hate to say it, but those teak benches are, in my opinion, not as pretty as they could be. They're so weathered, it's like splinter land.
Well, you can't oil them. They look a lot better if they're oiled, but then you have to do that every year.
Yes, I think that's why Facility still has, they're trying to do that, but I think they're past the point where you can even oil them back into life.
Well, one of them's been indoors for, what, two years or something?
That one's probably in good shape.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, my understanding is it's at the work shed um, outside of the senior center. That's where the bench is physically located, so.
Okay, just a side thought on anyway, thank you.
Um, sorry, I know we spent a lot of time on the director's report. Sarah got back to me this morning, so just bear with me for a moment. I have a proposed date of the QPR training for staff and trustees.
What is QPR?
So it's a suicide prevention, it's like mental health first responding. But it's specifically um, for suicide prevention. But we're gonna kind of take a greater mental health stance about situations that the library might face. So it's gonna work similar to the public safety training. Goes to the public and then people come in for this training. We basically use it as like a professional development afternoon. So Sarah is available on January twenty sixth, and then it would be from three to five.
Sounds good.
Okay. And you would close the library then?
Correct. I think we'll plan on closing it too. Um, and then set up, cause we'll need to set the space up for everybody and then go from there. Cause I believe that there are, um, there's multimedia pieces with this, unlike the police training.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, we, we delayed it a little bit because of reading buddies, but I do feel like we did the police one not that long ago. So I wanted to kind of space these out a little bit, and Sarah was flexible, she was kind to do that. So January twenty sixth is the date we're planning on, and I'll put reminders in the next couple trustee, uh, the director's reports so that you guys know. But you're okay if I close the building at two that day? Um, the transport chair. Let's get an update on that.
There is a transport chair at the townhouse. It folds and it takes up very little room. It only has four smallish wheels on it. It doesn't have the big, I can crank it myself with my hands thing. The actual wheelchair takes up a lot more space, and I'm wondering if we could get away with a transport chair. Even though it's a little more money, it's much less space and it's much more attractive. And if somebody has a problem, you can get them out of the building into an ambulance or wherever.
Yeah, so we'd like. Okay.
Cause the wheelchairs are, it's a big cumbersome ugly thing, and a transport chair is like, not.
So I will.
I agree with you, Mark.
Yeah, sorry.
I just said I agree with Marguerite. I think we need something smaller, even if it costs a little more money.
Um, so we'll, I think we'll proceed with the transport chair. I'm gonna look to see if we can pay for that out of our budget. Um, it's very possible we can because of the price point. If not, um, are you okay if I take it out of state aid?
Yes, do we need to vote on that?
No, because the expense is under a thousand dollars, so as long as I check in with you guys, we're okay. Same with the DPW, you don't have to take a vote, because the price was not projected to exceed a thousand. If it does go over a thousand for DPW, I'll come back. I will also report on the final price for the transport chair. I pegged to her credit, did get back to me this morning, they tried to see if they could pay for this out of another town fund. Um, or if Facilities had the budget to pay for it, and we are gonna have to pay for this ourselves if we want it, which I think makes sense, so.
To approximately two twenty-five, that sounds like a no brainer at this point.
Yeah.
Maybe we could store it in the space being vacated by the eagle.
That's a good idea, David. I didn't think of that. We could put it up, we could put the eagle in the wheelchair.
A twofer.
Ryan named it Caca.
Okay, um, anything else you guys wanna talk about with the director's report? I think that was, we kinda hit the big ones.
No, that's good.
Just grants, the potluck will be on the eighth. So I'm gonna be sending out an email about that. This is the first announcement, but that's for friends. Um, friends and staff, we're also gonna, this year invite our senior tax write-off volunteer, cause he's. We really treat him like an employee, so we're gonna see if he wants to come.
Good. Okay, uh, expense report.
Okay, Janet, you wanna go first?
Um, I just wanted to know what was going on with other office supplies and subscriptions, print and electronic. Um, because we're really.
Behind?
Flying through the budget.
So you, you wanna know, cause we're ahead or behind, or both?
We are. Ahead on both.
Okay.
Overspent what they thought we would have done by this point in the year.
Yes, so, so with both of those line items, we don't really spend on a sort of a month to month cycle. We did, we, we had to reorder paper recently for office supplies. So we got four reams of it, and then I kinda do a round robin with the staff to see if anybody needs anything. There was, we have to order calendar materials now. And then Mariana and Kim like to have these monthly planners as they sort of plan out programming. Um, we ordered soap, we completely ran out of hand soap. And then um, we also still need to order batteries. I forgot to do that in the last one. The batteries, we, we found this out this past weekend. But the batteries for all of the microphones in the speaker system need to be replaced because of their age at this point. And we use them over years, and I don't think we've replaced them since we initially got the sound system installed, which I think was in twenty seventeen. So it's very overdue to replace some of those. And then Kim uses batteries on a regular basis for the playaways that she purchases, which are the tiny audio players. Um, we're also more often using double As for some of the board games that we circulate. So we do replace those and for the chess timers, so there's a couple of applications. But anyway, I could go on and on about the office supply stuff. When, we, we spent a lot this month, and then we're gonna not have to buy things for the next couple of months. I think the only thing we're looking to supplement is potentially book covers. We haven't been using book covers because we had so many book delays with the Ingram shipments, but that's gonna pick up again. So I think you'll see that level off in the next couple of months.
It just seemed like that would be a line item that would pretty much balance itself out through the year, so it was jumped out when it didn't do that.
Yeah, we had a kind of a surplus of office supplies at the beginning of the fiscal year. But then we spent, we actually did spend a lot this month, because we were starting to completely run out of stuff. And the hand soap, I can tell you, we bought a significant amount during kind of like post-COVID time. Because we wanted to have enough sanitizer and soap, and then we just ran out of that supply. So we kinda buy a lot, because that's what we did in the past, and it's just easier. When I say buy all of it, I don't have to worry about it for a while. So I, I am kind of a bulk buyer, I'll say that. And that's just, cause when we order stuff, then I don't have to do it for a long time again, and I, I like that system.
As long as you have room to put it all.
Yeah, the um, subscriptions, right? The, that is sort of what I call a front-loaded um, line item. And that's because we end up spending a lot of the um, subscriptions cost. At the beginning of the fiscal year because of um, annual um, bills. So like, that's where we get hit with a lot of the database bills, the print periodical bills. The only reason there's an amount left is that we weren't able to get all of those vendors on a fiscal year cycle. So like Creative Bug, for instance, gets paid in January. I believe the ACABIT, which is the museum pass and event software package. That also gets paid somewhere around like January. So there's some delays, some of them are in the calendar year versus the um, fiscal year. So there's some variation there, but I know that that looks weird, because a lot of it has been spent already. But we, I've done my best to try to get that as much spent as I can at the beginning, so we don't have to worry about.
We're okay for the overall budget, in other words.
Uh, so if I am worried about anything, I will let you know. I know we're talking about taking on some of these costs um, for. Uh, the wheelchair and for the DPW amounts. Those I think are, we can absorb them, because we're gonna be dropping the News Bank resource. I was gonna reallocate those funds towards the school Gale databases, but we got that funded. Um, with the Southborough Community Fund for the first year, so this is giving us a little bit of budget flexibility. So we do have the ability to buy like the transport chair, the, the DPW amount for the uh, loan. So. Normally, we won't have that flexibility, I can tell you.
So good budget oversight, Janet. You were close reading.
I mean, there's other things we overspent, but we know that dues, we know that those come in when they come in and.
Yeah, we're, we're a little high too on programming recently. But that's because, again, that is not sort of a month to month variance. If we do a lot of, Mandy has been kind of bundling some of her bills, so she'll do like three craft programs over three months. And then she'll send us one bill, which I like, because then it's just easier to pay her one time. But it does sort of skewer the amounts we're paying, but programming is kind of a bizarre one too. But that's a much smaller amount than office, even office supplies, and then definitely from the subscriptions. So that's, if there was a problem, I promise I would let you guys know, or if I was concerned about something. We are kind of on target for what, where I think we should be right now. With the exception of the book budget, we're a little bit behind, but we are now attempting to catch up.
Okay, good, any other?
I would just like to say again, uh, I would advocate, uh, come the next budget cycle. That we see if we can't do more in the way of professional development. Um, uh, I'm familiar with my, in my former uh, working life. That um, human resource people believe that the uh, that the knowledge and the skills. That are imparted to employees are outweighed by the positive morale effect. By letting employees know that, that the place cares for them and, and is interested in, in building their capabilities. So that's the end of my speech, but I, I don't know, I, if I did the math right, we're at point oh, oh, six, seven. Of one percent of our budget, and of that, we've spent twenty-five dollars.
That's so sad, okay.
Yeah, we can do better.
Yeah, we will spend more. I don't, I completely one hundred percent agree with you, David. Um, I think we're gonna put in some amounts, and I'm going to have a rationale for why the amounts would go in. And then we're gonna kind of engage with the town this year on if there's any pushback. It doesn't seem like we can reach out to Personnel Board or another entity to fund professional development. So we just wanna make sure that it's gonna be kind of an annual cost. But um, Kim and I are going to more conferences. We'd like to include Mariana in that, so she can still continue to engage in her professional skills. For this year, I think we should focus on amounts for the three of us before we start trying to include other staff. Only because I think we need to incrementally look at doing this. And to be blunt, the three of us as the MLS staff members are the most expensive. Um, because we need professional association memberships in addition to the conference costs. So um, we, we can discuss more of like a criteria, if you're happy with these amounts. We, we were kind of given an informal directive not to go too crazy with budget increases this year. So this may be something we have to defend, so I'm just warning you guys in advance. I think this is a very easily defensible increase.
So Ryan, in your opinion, if, if there was a sufficient amount of um, if there was a sufficient. If there was a sufficient amount of professional development wishlist, uh, in an ideal world, how much money would it be? To do professional development for all of the library staff that you feel is qualified for? What, what's the actual amount? We're talking two thousand dollars a year? Three thousand?
No, it'd be probably higher.
Like what, four grand?
I don't know. I don't wanna just arbitrarily throw in a number. I would rather get some data on, on things people would go to. And how much things would cost. I know that Mar, that program that Mariana, the Leadership Academy, that Mariana was gonna go to. That would have almost depleted the entire budget. I think it was like a thousand dollars for her to go. And then she just, um, we had a sort of put in her application a little bit late, and then they were completely filled up. And they just, they couldn't take her this year, but she may wanna go next year, I think, so.
I, I agree completely with what David said. I think it's really important. If you talk to staff members and just ask them, is there something you would like to go see? Um, just to find out what roughly it would cost, because I think they deserve it, and I think the library would benefit hugely from it.
Before the budget gets, you know.
Yes, I, I can, I can try to reach out to everybody. Everybody's gonna be very happy, happy with this eagle removal, so people will be in a good mood. So I can double check.
Yeah, I would say, you know, if, you know, don't go crazy with this, but if you would like, you know, one professional development event a year. What might it be for you that would enhance your ability to work better and happier and work fabulously in the library? I mean, put it on there.
Well said.
I, I just think it's important.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, I'll get some data. So the Personnel Board met this morning. They still did not set the employee increase rate. Which really I'm dependent on in order to do the budget. So I'm getting together some of the other line items. I will take a particular focus on professional development. I know we also talked about programming, so that I'm gonna get some specific data on programming costs. That we would want out of the budget next year, and I will have some data behind that as well. And then again, subscriptions are all pretty much, um, it's kind of like what we have, um, planned. And then three to four percent increases on those. I think like print periodicals are four percent. I know a lot of our electronic databases do three percent increases, so that is kind of where I'm at. I, I saw your hand, Mary.
Yeah, when you're talking about programming, I just wanted to offer a quick note, which is, um. One of the, I think Kim would agree, one of the very popular programs that she's been running over the past few years. Is the, um, comics program with Jonathan Todd. And I think for the past few years, she has been able to find grant money for it that included, um, Southborough Community Foundation. Other things in that way. I think the granters that she has been going to have said, we happily funded this. But this is not something we can for fu- fund in like perpetuity. You have to come us, come with something new and different. However, in particular, Jonathan Todd's summer camp that he was doing at the library was very well attended, very well received. And people are already excited and hoping for it for the coming year, and I don't think there's necessarily a budget for it. So I just wanted to highlight that for the board and highlight it for, um, the budget for next year. Because I feel like that's the ki- that's the example of a kind of program that hits a wide range of kids. And is really popular, but also comes in on the more expensive side. And I leave it to Ryan to, to articulate whether that's something that's appropriate to get folded into a, an ongoing programming budget. But I just, I wanted to acknowledge that.
It's true.
So paying him at the rate he's asking for now, we don't have enough money in the current programming budget to do that. So we are, Kim has had conversations with him. We are negotiating on. Um, types of programs that are more feasible for the library to afford. I think part of this was because it was grant-funded, he, there was some leeway in. In funding things differently than the way that we would kind of engage with him on funding things.
We have a good program and we don't have, how much does it cost to run the summer camp?
We're, I, I say this, Marguerite, we may come to you guys with a request to use state aid funds. But what, let us, let Kim and I negotiate with him on the cost, because I think that that piece needs to be completed.
This is so sad to me. I mean, Recreation runs tons of programs and they get money for it. The library has a good program. Mary said it's popular with kids. It lifts the whole town up. It's so good, and we're afraid to put it in the budget.
We have allowed, um, we have worked with him on having smaller graphic novel programs. That are more affordable, that I think are, have just been as well attended. But I think we would like some version of the summer camp that Mary's talking about as well. So I, I, I don't want you to think that this is cost prohibitive. I think that part of what we do with vendors is we try to negotiate with them so that the, the. To be blunt, so that their financial request is reasonable.
And I did not mean to undermine those negotiations in any way. I, I fully support what you and Kim, how this gets resolved. I merely just brought this up as an example of what, when, when all shakes out. Um, it's the kind of program that I love that lives at the library. And if there's a way to, um, to keep programs like this, uh, if it means bump. This is just an example of a programming situation where if the programming budget could be a little bit more, I think this is a perfect.
Yeah, I'm, Mary, you're, you've, you've nailed it. The programming budget is always the one that gets cut. If it's a tight year.
Yeah, we've done that time after time if we needed to shrink it, yeah.
And it's the kind of thing, if it's a tight year, it means that it's a tight year across the board. And families might not be able to send their kids to the actual expensive camps where this. A vendor like this also runs a program, and so it, it just. Things like this, arts and crafty literacy things are really where the library can excel and fill an itch, so.
No, no argument there. It's just.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've made the case for programming as an operational expense. And then, I mean, I, I also say, Marguerite and Jane, remember a time. When the, we did not have a programming budget.
It went to zero.
It was zero, it was zero dollars. So the, getting this budget, um, took time and a lot of. Conversations, and then I, I think expanding it so that we can do all of the things we wanna do. Including graphic novel summer camps is very important. So that is gonna be a factor.
I, I think, yes, exactly, and it shouldn't, I think we should consider it as something that we, um, how shall I say? Assertively request every budget cycle. As opposed to, well, we don't totally need it. I think we should make a case that we sort of totally do.
Okay, if I have your.
You don't ask, you don't get it.
That really helps, and I think in the past few years, you've gone with me to the budget meetings and. To talk about this, and I know Mary has firsthand experience with how great this program is. And that might be worthwhile for some of these people to hear. But get ready to get frustrated when they start talking about cutting us, because I think those conversations will happen this year, so. I'm just warning you, so. But we need what we need. That's kind of where I'm at, so. Okay.
All right.
Kim and I will talk, I promise, about that specifically.
Asphalt pathway removal, this is agenda item number five.
Yeah, so I, that, we kind of buried the lead cuz it was in the expense report, cuz I didn't wanna forget. But you kind of got updated on that. It's been completed. It was completed the morning of Halloween. Um, so there is no asphalt pathway anymore. Um, we were gonna see if, um, we needed to. My understanding was that when we met with DPW, it was all good, that they could fill it in. Uh, I guess this cost hadn't come up, but that's fine. Um, so that's kind of where we're at with the project. I don't know if it's too late in the season for them to work on it now. So part of this may be that it gets filled in and seeded in the spring. At the very least, it'll get seeded in the spring. It's too late to put grass down, I'm pretty sure, with the temperature, so.
Probably, probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Are we gonna be looking at that yellow tape all winter, do you suppose?
I could remove it, but I think it's still good to, I, I think once we get snow, the tape is gonna be gone. But I, I'd like to keep the stakes there just so people realize that there's difference. It did highlight that the path is not there anymore, and then, to be honest, I have gotten no complaints. Lots of complaints on the eagle, no complaints on the, the asphalt pathway removal, so.
A block instead of having yellow tape.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. The eagle is in there. So, uh, all right, so that's under control. How about the library parking lot?
So I put this on the agenda cuz we talked about it last time. I don't know, I guess this is sort of a check-in, cuz, cuz I was very confused at the end of the last meeting. I thought we were kind of putting all of this stuff on hold for a while. I have, John and I sat down and talked about it. I've talked with a couple more people. We talked with asphalt when they came. And, um, reviewed it. The parking lot still has probably another decade of life before we have to do anything. That's the general consensus from people that do this work. So I think that we keep this as a background project. I know Janet, you were talking about maybe initiating engineering studies now. So I, I guess just let me know what you want me to do.
Okay. Well, one of my concern, one, one of my concerns about the law, about the parking lot is that there's drainage under there. To divert water from the street and from the underground stream. Um, and I don't know that there's any maintenance done on that drain. You know, those pipes don't last forever. You gotta clear them sometimes and whatever, so there's no, so nothing's happening with that either. So before we would ever go to repave it, we need to check to see if the drainage is adequate, if it needs to be changed, if it needs whatever. And I'm also just concerned that there's nobody looking at it at all. The other part was maybe that we could move some of the septic system under there, so that, those are longer-term things. But it has, it does have to start at some point. Um, and I don't know whether it's already time that that drainage should be looked at. To avoid future problems.
Completely agree on the drainage, but I think two of those catch basins are, are brand new when the Main Street project was done. And I think.
That's how long ago now.
Yeah, but, yes, and I think DPW is checking them with their pipe camera, which is very exciting.
They are, okay.
And then John, I, yeah, so this doesn't, this doesn't kind of directly address the parking lot. But John does do maintenance on all of the drains and the sump pumps that divert water away from the building. So water made pool, there is a small area where water is pooling in the parking lot. It, like where that sort of, um, walkway is from the parking lot, which I think many people have noticed before. I talked with Chris and with John about that pool. It's not significant. It never lasts more than a day, even during heavy rainfall. So, uh, basically, kind of what, that I'm gonna get in trouble for this one long-term. But I was kind of told that drainage, because we haven't flooded in the past few years. Even during heavy rainfall instances, that the drainage that was installed is working. That's what we should assume. Now Janet's point about being vigilant, the minute we get complacent about this is when we're gonna flood again. So I think we need to have, yeah, again, a very long-term, um, methodology about this. When, when we did look at doing the building grant last time, we kind of talked about the flooding history. But we weren't talking about active steps because we didn't want it to look like deferred maintenance. I think the way that you're kind of presenting it, Janet, is that we need to look at the parking lot. We need to look at relocating septic. We need to see the drainage table, how all of that is affecting. I think part of this could be folded into our next proposal, and we could emphasize some of those pieces. Cuz again, I was very focused on the building, but the parking lot is part of what we have to apply for when we do the building grant. I, I really wanted to apply one more time before we were kind of on our own with the town, if that makes sense. So maybe our emphasis should be on trying to integrate these things into the next building program. And then when we're doing the building program to submit for the grant, I think we could do a parking lot study at that point. And have that part of the application. So that might give us a, a timeframe for doing it. I just don't know when the, the grant cycle is gonna open up. I can tell you that'll happen before ten years from now.
Okay. All right, as long as you feel comfortable that, that we're keeping an eye on the drainage issues. Because if we flood, it's incredibly damaging, as you know. As long as that's getting looked at and maintained, then, then I'll, I'll relax.
Most, no, and thank you for saying that.
You don't need to relax.
We're all traumatized by the flood. So the other part of it is the, the DPW. Um, ha- townwide for all the catch basins does a maintenance thing cuz they get filled with silt. They clean it out with a scooper thing. Regularly, so it wouldn't be a bad idea to, to say, um, are we on that list or cuz, cuz we're not on a street. But we certainly do need someone to check how much sediment is inside of it and get it out if they. Deem that it is full of sand, which happened.
I, I, I hope that this doesn't sound like I'm minimizing any of the issues that you're bringing up, Janet. Because I think drainage and the potential of flooding, to be, to be perfectly honest, are always on my mind here. Like, in a way that I went doing what happened when we flooded, I don't ever wanna do that again. So it is, it really is in my best interest to never have to deal with that scenario. And I, I, I personally keep more of an eye on water. And potential intrusions than maybe other library directors would, but I have firsthand experience. I do not wanna deal with that again. And then I will continue to have conversations, but John is very helpful in talking about potential water mitigation. And again, we're looking at it more from the building perspective, but the water comes in potentially through the parking lot. So there's, there's sort of an extension there, and then I think we can continue to engage with DPW about different.
Yes, to, to make sure, but Janet, yes, thank you for, we're, it's like we live in the Netherlands, you know, you're just.
Finger in the dyke, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
The good thing is September and October are the heaviest rainfall months, so getting through that is, uh, whenever we get through and there's no water in the building. After September ends, I'm very happy. Sorry, Mary, I saw you.
You're, you're muted.
You're muted.
Thank you. Um, I have a tangential library parking lot, just observation I wanted to bring up. It's not about flooding, it's not about redoing the parking lot. It's, and Ryan, stop me if this is something you were gonna handle differently. But, um, at the last book sale, um, that, that interim book sale that we had in November that the friends had. Um, I'm sure it was a, like a fluky one-off problem, but it was a really busy day on eighty-five there. And Saint Mark's had what looked like really awesome tournaments going on, and so there were cars parked everywhere. They were parked, all of a sudden, we turned around, there were cars all up and down eighty-five. They were filling Saint Mark's lots, and, um, I, unfortunately, they filled. There were, I'm guessing, because a lot of out-of-town plate, a lot of out-of-state plates. Um, Kim and I sort of assessed the situation and, and our conclusion was that they were also spilling into the library parking lot. And so therefore, folks coming to the, patrons coming to the library and folks wanting to shop the book sale, were having to go much further afield to find parking. So a fluky thing that you have to deal with when you have close neighbors there with exciting activities going on. But I just did wanna bring it to any, everyone's attention because if we notice that's happening with a frequency, um. With our tiny parking lot, it might be something we need to think about, um, coordinating with them on or somehow in the future.
Or we could simply, uh, consult the, uh, the Saint Mark's calendar and, and schedule our, uh. Our book sale at a time when they're not having, uh, multiple tournament events.
Um, we.
That was kind of a one-time thing. It was the replacement for Heritage Day, right? Is that what you're talking about, Mary?
Yeah, it was, it was that, it was that interim one that we did in, in November, so definitely. Not, it was totally fluky, but it just, you know, I, uh, I know Kim had noted it and suggested it was just. Worth, um, making everyone aware of in the off-chance that it happens more often. Worth, um, making everyone aware of in the off chance that it happens more often.
I didn't have a problem parking, so it may have been later in the day, later in the, in the. Cause I parked in our parking lot then. But anyway, yeah, I think David's suggestion would, would, uh. It likes help to predict when the overflow is happening.
Boy, I would like to think that Saint Mark's would, being a responsible neighbor, would worry about their incursions. Into our parking lot and to the center of town.
I don't. You're joking, aren't you?
No, I'm not. That's what they should be doing.
So.
I've had a lot of contact with them, um. Because of garden club events at the community center and asked permission for, um. Did I say that? The, the plant sale at the community house in May? Could we park on that road, you know, that used to be the fire station?
Yeah.
And one year, oh, I guess they had to get back to me. They had to make sure that they weren't gonna be using that. And, um, the second year it was, no, we're using that. So I don't think the, any thought. Is coming from their direction to what other things are happening. They have their sports schedule and their, you know, um. Perspective student things and celebrations and you, you know, in a, in a perfect world, sure. But I think.
Police officer posted?
I can, I can answer that question.
Wait, for the sale, for the plant, for the book sale?
When there's an activity at the library and we find that Saint Mark's is gonna be. Using more than their allotted fair share of spaces, um, maybe we could have a police officer.
So you can, we could hire a police officer who will get paid overtime to do traffic duty in the parking lot. If you saw the rate of what they charge, I don't think you're gonna wanna do that. I have data because of.
It's over a hundred bucks an hour, right?
I believe yes. That sounds correct.
But, but even if it's from, because I, I called the police to come, um, a couple of years in Nov-. We have a November guest day in Pilgrim Church, uh, event for the South Borough Gardeners. And this year there was. And, uh, two years ago, I was president of this for two years. In both years, I called the police and said. This is happening, uh, we know that parking is, is gonna be difficult. Because there was all this construction equipment in the lot, in the parking lot that we share with Pilgrim Church. Or whatever, you know what I mean? The townhouse and pilgrim church and the event was in pilgrim church. So please don't picket our guests if they're parking in an inappropriate place. They said, no problem. The policeman came and he stayed for the whole event. We didn't pay him any. We gave him coffee. Donuts, but we didn't pay him. I mean, it never.
Yeah, you just got muted.
No, her sound cut out. She's still talking and she's not muted.
She's not muted.
No, we can't hear you, can you? You cut out in the middle of the sentence.
Yeah.
Earbuds.
Oh, I was supposed to pass on that the reason that Jane is, does not sound as muffled. Is that they've upgraded the, um, network on her street.
Excellent. Excellent. I noticed the difference.
I wonder if her earbuds lost power.
Yeah, and they're.
Just, Amy, do you have a hard stop? She's gone.
She's already gone.
I'm here. I just keep muting myself. Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna have to go off in about five minutes, max.
Five minutes, okay.
Carry on without me. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just wondering if there's anything we need to vote. Hotspot policy?
Well, do you wanna talk about the president? Are we done with the parking lot? Is that okay?
Let's move on because Amy has to leave in five minutes.
Well, I'm sorry, I have something else to say. In the, in the past.
Yep.
We have engaged with Saint Mark's to ask them about making sure that the library parking lot is accessible. For library patrons when it's open. I'm happy to do that again and, uh, reassess that with the Saint Mark staff. I believe the grounds person is Officer Landry. Um, oh, it was the former Officer Landry. It's Kevin Landry who used to work for the police department.
I don't know that we're at that point yet. I just wanted to flag what had happened on this one weekend as kind of a data point. And if we.
It's happened.
That it was continuing to happen or, and you know it's been happening more frequently, this is a data point to that.
It's an ongoing issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe last forty, fifty years, right?
Is, is Kevin Landry now working for Saint Mark's, are you saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, but I'm happy to try to reach out to him if he's still in that role. He was last time it kept.
Sounds fine to me. I, I don't feel strongly one way or the other, so.
Okay.
How about the preservation restriction? Why we still got Amy?
So very, very quickly, um. I checked in with John about this. John said that the edits were added to, um, the library one. I believe the edits also were added to the townhouse one. So I think we, the feedback that we gave modified the townhouse one. They were sent to the attorney. The attorney sent it to the state. We're now waiting for the state to respond. So that's where we're at with the preservation restriction.
Okay, wait a minute. If, as I remember, when we did this last round, the state never responds, right? They just make a pile of, of these things on their desk.
No, they, I, I believe that they have to okay it before it goes into effect.
Yeah, it has to be approved.
We have to pay them.
It has to be approved by the, um, what is it?
I know, I can't remember the guy's name. I thought when we talked to Preservation Worcester before, it was just we'd make the agreement with them. File it with the state, but not expect a response.
Well, I had heard that it goes to the state and the state may or may not like the, um, archaeological.
No. So this was, it gets reviewed by the Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer. At the Mass- Massachusetts Historical Commission. So that man is the same from when we did the project. His name is Michael Steinitz. Michael and I exchanged emails years and years ago about this. And so basically, I think at one point, Janet, we had asked Michael if he would help us write one. And if we could be, have the restriction directly through the state. And that, that never kind of materialized because generally Michael doesn't write them. He doesn't. Like do the, the actual restrictions. He, his office just approves them. So he, the, it still needs to go through the Ma- Massachusetts Historical Commission to make sure it meets the criteria. Of what these restrictions could be. So they may have additional feedback. And then if they do, well, they'll get, tell the lawyer and it'll come back to us.
Okay. I wonder how much, um, Preservation Worcester charges now for this. At the time we were talking to them originally, it was fifteen thousand dollars, but.
I, I could ask John that question. I don't know.
Just curious.
It's still gonna be paid for out of the funding that was originally allocated for the CPA project. I did confirm that. Because we asked, so the money is already there.
Okay, great.
But that's where we're at with that, just to update everybody. So I am, uh, this item, I'm gonna take off the agenda for next meeting. Do you, so do you, I'll check in about this at the end, but present, I, until we have an update on the preservation restriction. I just don't have anything to tell you guys. It's, it's with the Massachusetts Historical Commission now.
Yes, we put it on the agenda when, when there's some action that we need to take when it comes back.
Yeah.
And thank you Janet and Ryan for your above and beyond work on this.
Janet did a lot more work than I did on all of this. She deserves the credit.
Amy is, Amy is off, I think. All right.
Okay.
So wireless hotspot policy, circulation policy.
Okay, so there were just a few quick updates. Um, we haven't looked at this policy in the last three years. So it, uh, is due for a quick review. Um, the things that were added were situations that specifically came up. The main thing, I'll give you the Cliff Notes, is that there's an area that talks about, don't return the hotspot in the book drop. Well, somebody did that. And then, uh, what do we do? The policy didn't say. So we're gonna charge those people five dollars, but if the hotspot breaks in the book drop, they're gonna have to pay for the whole thing.
Yes.
So they get a five dollar fine for doing it in the first place. And then if they break it, they have to pay a hundred and twenty, which is the replacement.
I totally support that.
Yep.
Okay.
That's good.
The, the other, because th- there's been a lot of feedback from the staff on sort of what I'm calling the household issue. Which is that people come and they take out a hotspot. And they're using it in the same household, right? For a family. I got into, I, I would say, uh, an elevated discussion with a patron who returned this. And she returned it for her husband. And then she immediately, she left, came back 10 minutes later and wanted to check out a hotspot. So what we do is she did it under her card versus returning it under her husband's card. So I can't say for sure that this woman was using the hotspot. But she was in individual possession of a hotspot that she returned and then wanted to immediately take out another one. Which is sort of antithetical to the spirit of the policy, because the idea is that.
She had two in the household at the same time.
No, she wanted to return one and then immediately take out another one, but use a different library card to do it. So the policy addresses this as a scenario. It says that that's not allowed. You're subject to the wait time if you return on behalf of another person. So, cause she said this isn't in the policy. I actually pointed to an area in the policy that I felt like did cover it. And she wasn't allowed to check out a hotspot until the next day. So.
So my question is, how, are there ever times when there are no more hotspots to check out and people want them?
Yes.
Do we need more hotspots?
No, because it's rare now. It's mainly if there's like some sort of power outage or disaster. That's when we gotta run on them. But we, we have twenty of them in circulation. I would say at any given time, we have five or six. So they're being well utilized and they're cycling through. But if people did what this woman tried to do all the time, where they're immediately checking out hotspots. It's not giving people an equal opportunity to try to get them. And we say 24 hours, but the practice is like she returned it on a Monday afternoon. If she had come in Tuesday morning, we, we let her check them out. It's the next day. So it's really the next day. So a- again, we're kind of meeting people halfway with this. We understand that if people need the internet. And they're reliant on the hotspots, we're trying to facilitate that, but we need to give people an opportunity. To get it if they are waiting.
Do you, do you know, what, what do people use these for? I mean, I can see if there's a power outage, but.
When they travel, they take.
It's a multitude of purposes. We've gotten feedback that people use them when they travel. Some kids are, use them for homework. That's come up. Um, the internet's been down at the library. We've used them. That happens actually. Um, and then obviously if people lose power, they lose internet as well. So there's been times, I know like a tree branch fell and there was an internet outage and then everybody came in. Somebody said, I, I, on the internet, I, I need, I need like it, the internet to work, because they work from home. So they had to come get one, um, in order to, because they had battery power in their computer, they could, they just needed internet. If that makes sense. But there's, uh, we don't take a poll Janet on what people are using it specifically for. I, some of it is entertainment, some of it is work, some of it is kids using it for school.
Is like most of it used by just a few people?
No.
It's pretty wide.
It's a pretty wide.
Does seem like a lot of work for you folks and a lot of tough calls and charging money and all this kind of stuff.
I think it's a great, um, addition to what the library.
It's a nice thing to offer, as long as it's not getting in the way of, again, our primary thing is not internet off. Offerings, it's, you know, education and literacy and other things.
Well, I would, I would say access, like, right? We provide access to resources. So one way we do that is by providing these devices which allow for greater access for people. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Mary.
You didn't. I was just gonna provide two other observations here. One, it's great, don't forget the, the loan period is three weeks, which is a nice, robust period. And then a 24-hour pause on that is minimal compared to that three weeks. So that's generous. I, I love that. And then, um, just to put it in the context of other things at the library, you know, the, some of the most popular books you can take for two weeks on that. Um, that quick turnaround, but you have to return it. Um, you know, you can't, you can't get the renewals on it. And so that's another connection to another established library program that I think, um, people gives us permission to do this in a lot of ways.
And it originally started as, as a program, it was kind of like the, uh, the community fund giving, um, funding to start it. I think the state started it because they were underfunded areas where people didn't have internet. So they gave it to us and it was like very cheap or it was nothing the first couple of years.
Nothing. And then we had it for 15 months for free through the state.
And it was, it was popular because it, it, kids would take it on vacation and, and it just, it was a good thing. I, I, I support it still. I think it's very, um, useful, as long as it's not being abused, so.
Well, so I just, because I wanna circle back to Janet's point too. In the history of, of us doing this program independently and even including the state program. We've only had one user not return a hotspot. And they're being charged for it if they ever come back. And they're not allowed to ever check out a hotspot from us again either. So tha- that is, I think, the, the most extreme example of us having an issue. Cause I tried to get in touch with that person. They didn't give us a correct phone number. And I, the address they gave us, I don't think is a permanent address that they have. So, um, you know, that's why it's important for us to check all that information. And that's why, you know, when people have their cards expired, they have to come in to do it. Um. We, we generally are not having issues with them. And we do have people who do check them out on a, like they'll return one. And they'll come in a couple of days later and check out another one. We have a handful of those users. So there are a couple of people who are like what I would call the repeat hotspot users. But generally, there's a pretty good cross-section of different people coming in and using them. We just wanna make sure that the policy is addressing the things that have come up for the staff in the last three years. The other thing we clarified, sorry, there was a third point that was clarified, was that if somebody never returns it. Like we had with this one particular user, they're being charged the late fee for it, which I think maxes out at a hundred dollars. And then they also are being charged the replacement fee for it. So if this person ever came back, they would have to pay. The amount, the hundred dollars max fine and the replacement cost for it. So, um.
We're not gonna see them.
It's two hundred and twenty dollars total.
Okay.
But Carol brought this up. She's like, normally with books, the overdue fees go away. And then we just charge the lost book, even though we're fine free. There's like a running tally of how many days and how much it costs. Cause the hotspots are a different type of item. We, we do charge the lost fee and the replacement cost for the item. Um, and we, we combine those. So the policy states that, so that it's clear.
So do you want us to vote on the policy that we accept it as a new?
It is, it is a policy, so you have to vote on it. If people didn't read it or they're, they want another chance to, you can review this. And you can vote on it next time, but I wanted to give you the draft policy right here. Uh, I would say like ninety-five percent of the policy is the same as the one three years ago. Those additions were the ones that are different.
It looks to me ready to vote on. Do you think?
I have a, I have a edit.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, the second bullet, when it says they're available on first come, first served. I think it needs to say a first come, first served basis.
Okay, I think it was like that before. I might have truncated it so that it, it didn't spill onto another line. But I can modify that.
You can also just get rid of the on. They are available first come, first served.
That's true.
If you're worried about the line.
Yeah.
Isn't it interesting how our, our writing changes because we don't wanna have too many words on the line?
It's a very wordy, it's for one page, it's very wordy.
I like.
It's, it's half policy, half instructions on how to use it.
Direction.
That's why.
I think it's good.
Yep.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna, do I have a motion to accept it as amended?
Take the motion.
Okay, uh, do I have a second?
Well, well, let's give her a second, Mary. Yeah. Janet made the motion. Mary seconded.
Okay.
A Landry, I.
Heckberg, I.
Nobody dares.
NTI.
Uh, Jane, you can just do thumbs up.
We can't hear you. We still can't hear you, we're sorry.
Yeah, that's an I.
Okay.
Thank you, all right.
Can you, Jane, you can hear us, though? You can hear us? Okay, yeah.
We can't hear anything, Jane.
If you, Jane, if you wanna text me, I can, I can be your voice. Okay.
All right, uh, the la- the next item of discussion is the library disaster slash emergency plan.
Okay, so this is also a brief update. I have continued to work on this. I would like to keep this as a recurring agenda item. I have reached out to other libraries to see what they have done. I've gotten some interesting suggestions. Um, including, I will say, one that we're gonna adapt in the short term, which is. Um, I I feel like I am of the age where many of you would remember this, but you know how you would have those like emergency numbers on your fridge? If you ever had to get in touch with somebody. So one of the libraries um, said that they did this. For all the service points, so that like when there's a, you have to call like animal control. You have to do like a quick number to the police. Um, so we're gonna develop that document, I think, as a short term. Cuz that is pretty easy and quick to put together. For the longer form disaster plan. I found out that MLS, the Mass Library System, which is one of the state organizations, has a template. That you can work with your police department to fill in. Some of the libraries has have also given me examples. How they worded some of the stuff. So I'm using that template as um, basically the foundation of what our plan is gonna be. But I, even though I'm not gonna come back and have you guys approve it, cuz remember, we have to kind of make it a confidential document. I just want to keep you updated on my progress, so that you're aware that work is continuing to be done.
Sounds great. Comments, anyone? Suggestions?
And again, the trustees can come. Once the plan is complete, I will let you know. And then you can come to my office and review it, if you would like. And I would encourage all of you to take me up on that offer.
I have a medical appointment at one o'clock. If we need to vote on this, if you need my vote, I'm happy to do that right now.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything else to vote on, David, so if.
Okay.
Okay, so, good. I think that's a great idea. I'm looking, also, we can probably adjourn, except we have two attendees. Uh, Sam Stivers and Tim Lit, if they have any comments.
Yeah, just raise your hand, guys, and I can bring you over.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to sign off, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's okay.
Thank you. Okay, no public comments? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, our next meeting.
Meeting, yes, yes.
December eighth is what I have down.
Okay, so I have, let me see, I have December eighth. Is that gonna work for everybody? It's a Monday?
It's the same day as the open, the the potluck.
The potluck. So we could, there's a couple of options here and we can talk about this offline. But in the past, we did the in-person meeting and then you like, it kind of, we did it in the afternoon. So there could be a trustees meeting. And then once you break, you could be here for the potluck. We can also do the same format as this and just do the meeting in the morning. And then you guys can come in physically for the potluck. So, cuz we are down two members. And because Jane um, is like Little Mermaid now, and we can't hear her, is um. I think I should check in with everybody over email.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, that was the best analogy I could think of. But like, we, I think I should check in with everybody over email about what people wanna do. And then just whatever the consensus is, we'll do that.
Okay.
If we do the meeting, I, yeah, the meeting, I think we should do at four or three thirty. If we do it, so that there's enough time to get through all the items. So. If we do it in person.
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
Sorry, Jane.
So we'll wait to hear. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion. I will make that motion to adjourn.
Okay, so Mary made the motion. Jay, Janet seconded.
Okay, uh, Landry, I.
Jane's I.
Jane, I.
Maybe I.
Okay.
NTI.
All right, thank you, my dear people. Um, I will see you on the eighth, if not before. And thank you, Ryan, for everything.
Yes.
They, I'm sorry, it was kind of a long one. There was kind of a list.
Well, we had a lot of stuff to go through, anyway. Okay, see you soon, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Little mermaid.
Kind of, right?